It is now seven o'clock and I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, January 27, 2020. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Carrubas?
Here.
Mr. Rayzac?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Rising? Ms. Demming?
Here.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
And we do have a quorum. Ms. Demming, could you lead us in pledge?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I think, Ms. Demming, you have a board salute.
I do. Let me grab mine. Sorry, Mr. President. District 204 students represented in Film Festival. The board salutes the District 204 students whose work was represented at the GEG Chicago Land Student Film Festival. There were over 145 submissions from across the Chicagoland area and nine winning categories. Students from Indian Prairie won four of the nine categories, including three grand prizes. The elementary grand prize was awarded to Mark Troyer's fifth-grade students at Graham Elementary for their film, "The Sandwich." The middle school grand prize went to Megan Tuilitzson's eighth-grade class at Hill Middle School for their film, "Flames of Notre Dame Come Together." Mateo Valley students and Rachel Bostick's sophomore English class won both the high school grand prize for their film, "Coming Together Against Climate Change," and high school best screencast for their film, "The Power Behind a Gun." Students will have their films screened and be honored at the Student Voice Film Festival in Chicago on February 21st. Congratulations to all students and teachers involved.
Thank you. Time to move to our student representative report. It's from Niqua Valley High School. We have Shivansh Gupta. Welcome.
Good morning, everybody. Since you've probably forgotten from the last year, my name is Shivansh Gupta and I am Niqua School Board Representative. Today, I'll be relaying your Niqua update. We closed off last year at Niqua with finals and started off this year by welcoming the class of 2024 through high school 101 and eighth-grade open house events. Everyone except seniors chose their courses for the next year after they came back as well. Last week, we celebrated World Language Week through events like "The Taste of the World," where students and staff eat food bought in by different Niqua Valley students of various cultures. We also hosted the multicultural show, which brought together students of different cultural backgrounds to perform a variety of exciting and unique acts. Finally, we had a career day on Friday, in which adults came and spoke to students on how they use language in their jobs. Thank you to all of our Wildcats for performing and for coming out to the event, and thank you to the adults who came out to speak at the career fair. This week, on January 30th, we are hosting a scholarship seminar during student auction periods to introduce some scholarship opportunities to our seniors. On February 30th, we're going to be celebrating National School Counselors' Week to thank all of our school counselors for giving 100% of their time and effort. This Thursday and Friday, the Orcasus Dance Company will be hosting the 2020 Dance Showcase at 7:00 p.m. on February 1st in the NVH's auditorium. Tickets are $12 for adults and $5 for students. Niqua will be hosting its variety show on Friday, February 8th.
... all week and in the main building. We can't wait to see this talent among our Niqua community. On February 30th, students from unique backgrounds will talk about their challenges, struggles, and stories in the "Hello, My Name Is" event. This will be held in student's gym-gym periods. We would also like to say good luck to track boys' and girls' basketball, boys' swimming, wrestling, bowling, dance and cheer, along with speech as they begin their competitive seasons. We're excited to see how our Wildcats perform. Last but not least, we will be hosting parent-teacher conferences on February 27th from 1:00 to 8:00 p.m. Thank you all so much for giving your time and see you next time.
Thank you. We do not have anyone signed up for public comment today, so I'm going to move the consent agenda and superintendent report. Dr. Sullivan?
Okay, I'll start by saying we're excited about the launch of the Kids Matter Career Path Race program tomorrow at Dealer Inspire. The purpose of the program is to provide some authentic career exposure to high school juniors and seniors through partnerships with local businesses and corporations who support workplace learning experiences. So, Kids Matter's first partnership is with a local business called Dealer Inspire. Dealer Inspire provides marketing and technology solutions to the automotive retail industry, and Dealer Inspire will be mentoring students from both Indian Prairie 204 and Naperville 203 this year. So, we have a program kickoff event tomorrow. We really look forward to working with Kids Matter and their partners in this program. And as all of you know, recreational marijuana became legal on January 1st in Illinois, and on Thursday, January 30th, our parents and students are invited to attend Marijuana 101: What You Need to Know from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the LMC at Still Middle School. We have presenters from 360 Youth Services, from both the Naperville and Aurora Police Departments, and they're going to share important information regarding health, safety, and the new laws related to the recent legalization of marijuana in Illinois. And District 204 and the Indian Prairie Parents Council are hosting this event to help inform the community about this timely topic, so please see our website for any further information. And lastly, this is one of my last pleas to our parents out there to take part in the Illinois Five Essentials Survey. The survey is only open until February 14th, and as a district, we really value hearing from our parents about their child's school. We use that information from the survey to guide our school improvement efforts, and we only get the results back from the state if 20% of our parents respond at each individual school. So, we're urging all of our parents to take the time to complete the survey and give us your feedback. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. We move on to the consent agenda items. I need a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items D through K as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items D through K as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye. Motion passes. With the board's permission, I'm going to ask that we move one item, the City of Aurora Tax Increment Financing District Discussion, next. Since we have a fiduciary responsibility and our
On the clock.
District Attorney is here on the clock.
I think it's prudent that we move this up. Anybody have an objection? Hearing none. I'm going to ask Aristotelianis and Jay Strang to come up and give us a report on the City of Aurora Tax Increment Financing District.
Good evening. My name is Aristotelianis from the forensic law firm. So, as you know, Jay and I have been meeting extensively over a period of months with representatives from the City of Aurora with respect to a TIF district. They are contemplating and will probably most likely be implementing shortly known as the Cedarwood Development at 75th and Ogden. We have developed a framework for an IGA that would address the district's concerns and some of the development issues on the west side of Route 59 from Cedarwood North, including the mall. And later this week, we are expecting, we've been told to expect from the city, a draft intergovernmental agreement. Jay and I look forward to receiving that agreement so we can review it before a meeting we have scheduled with the city for Friday afternoon. We hope to get it in order to make that meeting as productive as possible. Any questions?
Mr. Carrubas?
So, we have two governmental bodies that are working together to try to benefit both of their tax base and constituents, trying to come to, you mentioned the intergovernmental agreement, so we're trying to formalize a relationship, much like we've done in other cases, our student resource officers agreement, so that we can have a mutual understanding on the interactions between both governments, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
All right. We're trying to, and we've been negotiating for a long time, and we are hopeful, and it's in both parties' best interest to come to an agreement. And do we have a timeframe on when we anticipate coming to an agreement?
We are expecting a draft of the IGA within a day or two. We're meeting to go through it Friday afternoon, and our framework is a very solid document, so hopefully the IGA will be, you know, well-developed and address all of those issues. And if it's a solid document, does not need a lot of changes, we would hope and expect that it would be approved by the school board and the city shortly thereafter.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harris.
We now move, and I need some time to get through the agenda here, so bear with me. We now move to the action items. First one is the action item regarding student suspension review. I need a motion that the Board of Education uphold the four-day suspension of the student identified in closed session and to approve the written decision to that effect.
I move that the Board of Education uphold the four-day suspension of the student identified in closed session and to approve the written decision to that effect.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll, please.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next action item is the approval of a resolution to prohibit sexual harassment, and I need a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution to prohibit sexual harassment, Policy 5:20 and Policy 2:105 as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution to prohibit sexual harassment in the following policies, 5:20 and 2:105.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Susan.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, I thought so.
I would like to comment on this. So, I tend to be a stickler for rules and process, and I'd like to comment on how thoughtful Springfield and our state government can be. We are being asked and required to approve a resolution so that we can then approve a policy. So, we are taking action on a useless step in order to then take a useful step. So, I don't think anybody has any disagreement with the policy, but they have, in their rush to make things better, and sometimes the, their square pegs, round hole solutions don't work. And so, a resolution might be appropriate for city governments, but we don't need to resolve to approve a policy. We just approve the policy. That's all I got.
Anyone want to try to follow that?
We could do something at the delegate assembly about prohibiting the
Yes.
...
We could also try to reduce our oath and our executive session recitals.
With that, I think we're ready to call the roll. Jackie, please.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Our next action item is approval of Policy 6:235 for first reading, which is the access to electronic networks. Do I have a motion to approve the policy as presented?
I motion that the Board of Education approve the Policy 6:235, access to electronic networks for first reading as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Smeets?
Thanks so much. Yeah, 6235 has been in place for us for a while. This is a modification we're requesting that looks at the web filter use and how we're using that within the district, as well as clarifying the liability and responsibility of those records and materials that are presented.
Can I clarify? So, this was not one of the press updates. This was something that we're seeking a change to.
Correct.
So, can you, where exactly is the change that we're?
Sure. It's at the Internet Use Acceptability. So, if you scroll down past the section you're in, it's right towards the middle area in red. There it is, right in that spot. And essentially, it just talks through the district receiving logs and materials about what students are searching and materials, and what actions we take as a result of those logs, and then at that point, what's the liability of the district having this information if an incident were to occur. So, at Legal Counsel's recommendation, we included some language, again, which was not part of Press Plus, but was an opportunity for us to clarify that for the community as well as for staff and students.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Smeets, I've had parents come up to me and ask me about whether we do this, so can you briefly just go through what the district does in order to protect the safety of our students?
Sure. Some of these, I won't go into full detail on, just based on the security of our infrastructure. But for the sake of this specific policy, the district has web filter monitoring in place that prevents students from accessing inappropriate sites based on the FCC's guidelines on that and requirements, so explicit images, pornography and other content areas. Beyond that, the district receives a report each morning at around 2:00 a.m. that provides suspicious search results, which would be searches indicating violence or self-harm or excessive searches around some of those topic areas that we discussed. Building principals then take those spreadsheets and opt to engage in conversations with students where there might be care or concern, and that's just, again, kind of clarifying what we're doing with these and what are the intention and spirit.
So, back in the old days, before computers
Wow!
When I was an administrator, clearly this wasn't a requirement. So, who's responsible for monitoring this? I mean, somebody, this is a job now, right?
Yeah, so this is a partnership across, really, a responsibility shared by everyone in the district in some way, shape, or form. So, Technology Services cultivates these records based on services. The principals partner with Technology Services and Curriculum and Instruction to identify what are conversations that are best for digital citizenship, right? Because we don't want every single search result to result in an hour-long conversation with a student, but instead know that students are developing and growing and searching out to best understand their world. And so, teachers are engaging in conversations with students as they encounter things that are happening in the classroom, as well as parents are engaging in conversations because principals often will talk to families about things that they see as outreach. We also have principals who are very committed, obviously, not only to their students in the classroom, but outside of the classroom when we have after-hours issues that do come up that present themselves, so.
And I guess my point with that question was, this clearly is an additional responsibility.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments or questions?
I've got one, and we talked about this briefly. I'd like for the board to consider it because it didn't come up, is I like giving administration some flexibility, and so here we're committing ourselves to an additional duty that is not required by law, and we are then in board policy giving specific direction on what the district's doing. So, the district is getting alerted once daily. That's very specific. A lot of other areas in our policy kind of just defer to administration in coming up with procedures. So, if administration wants to make this part of board policy, I'm willing to, you know, defer to that, but I think we all should consider the fact that we are now saying we're going to do monitoring, and if administration doesn't want to monitor, then they're going to have to change policy. And if the district doesn't get alerted once daily, now we have, we have a policy that needs to get changed or a policy violation. I think either way, we're saying we assume no responsibility, but I like to set expectations and put it in writing as best we can. So, I throw that out there for everybody to consider, and that's what I got.
Any other comments?
So, this wasn't advised by press, but this was approved by our attorney.
Correct. Mm-hmm. That's correct.
When you say approved, was there a discussion such as what Justin is suggesting?
There was. Mm-hmm. This was several rounds of discussion to go through starter language to arrive at the place we are now, to set clarification around how we're actually using this information. Again, press doesn't necessarily provide this specific language, and we did a comparison against other districts and their use of 6235, and in those areas, it's unclear as to how they're using these logs, even though they are using tools to provide this level of oversight. One of the areas of concern was about how the liability being unclear from the district as to a partnership between families and the district and the use of devices was an important component, and this was to set some foundation for those discussions. So, the attorney felt very strong about how we worded some of these things, but I think the feedback that Justin provided is an important one for us to review, potentially from the may and shall perspective. So, I think that's important feedback for us to receive.
Yeah, I mean, to me, the key was that last sentence that was in there. I mean, because just like adults, students as well, there's ways around things that I know about having been in tech for so long that, but we are saying we're doing the best we can and monitoring these things, but we also, that's why we have the parents sign a liability agreement that they agree with their student to make sure that they're using it in the right manner, but there's always ways around that, too. So, I'm glad we added this.
So, Justin, are you suggesting it say something simple like the administration reserves the right to conduct monitoring?
I think you should apply for your law license. That's a great suggestion. I think, I think there's benefit to putting it out there, informing people that we're doing it. I think there might be a more prudent way to give us more flexibility. You know, we might monitor more than daily. We might, you know, need to change it. You know, I think once you start getting into some of the particulars, I would like to see just some, administration some flexibility so we're not amending this policy as technology changes.
It's too focused for you.
Yeah.
So, it's on for first reading so that we could have this discussion, so we can play with it and come back because it will be, will show up at the next board meeting for another reading. So, we'll see if you like that better.
I have a question. So, this is more alerting students and parents that we will monitor you. It's not telling them that we're going to monitor you and we're going to have, we're going to provide you feedback as to what your kid is doing. I just want to, right.
So, yes, that's what I'm wondering. Do we want to table it?
Is there any urgency with getting this done by the next meeting?
I think that we can come back to you with another revision to review would be a great next step.
Okay.
So, are we tabling it?
I don't mind approving this subject to change.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I think we can all agree in concept it's good, and now we're tweaking the language. I think that's enough for first reading, subject to revisions, as we've discussed.
Great.
But if they're going to bring it back, if we've already stated we're going to bring it back, then why not table to see what that, to approve, once we see, make another motion to see what that revision is, then approve it then?
Legally, we have to have a first reading, right?
Right.
So, then to have a first read of the next time, we just then push it out even farther. I mean, not that there's a problem with that, but to just change language slightly is just a language change. So, we can provide, or we can approve as is, subject to change.
Subject to revision.
Subject to the second reading, essentially.
So, you have to amend the motion? I just want to be clear procedurally.
We should, yes, yes, we do. So, we have a motion that's been seconded. Either we
Withdraw the
Draw that motion and make a new motion, or we vote that one down.
Who made the motion? Do you want to withdraw it?
I'll withdraw it.
Is that?
I moved that the Board of Education approve the Policy 6:235, access to electronic networks for first reading as presented, subject to amendment pursuant to our discussion here tonight.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second? Second. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll.
Snip, snap.
Yeah, there was. Sorry.
Sorry, actually, it caught me six years ago. Then I would have tried to do that. Now, I'm trying to put something down that sounds sort of like what he said. And then I'll make sure it's appropriate when I do that. And I apologize, but.
No, I get it. I understand completely.
Okay. Let me just make this work.
Okay, I might have it. Well, or not. Hang on one second. Okay, let's see. Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now move to our discussion item on professional learning.
Thank you.
That's a good group here.
Yeah.
We'd like to thank you for the opportunity to talk with you tonight about professional learning update. This is connected to Board Policy 5100, which refers to our agreement with the IPEA about providing professional learning. Within that board policy, there's compliance pieces about what professional learning is mandated, as well as providing a program for teachers to gain credit. Joining me tonight are
Good evening. Candy Michele, Director of Professional Learning.
Good evening. Mike Anders, Safety, Security, and Emergency Preparedness Coordinator.
That's why I had him introduce himself. That's why I had him introduce himself. Um, the purpose of our presentation tonight is to provide you with an update on our current professional learning practices and the connection to board goals, as well as to highlight a couple of areas of professional learning. Um, we shared with you our catalog so that you could see that there's a vast number of opportunities uh, for professional learning that are provided, um, we've provided since March of two thousand nineteen. And so we won't be going through all of them this evening, uh, but we will be highlighting a few. This slide is here to represent, um, there are six things that are around the edge of student growth through teacher support. Uh, digital citizenship, computational thinking, uh, career exploration, culturally responsive teaching, social and emotional learning and volume reading. As we looked at these, um, these are six things that we will be asking teachers to embed within their instruction as they, um, deliver the content. So you see that, if you think of that as a plate, there are many pieces to this plate, um, that a teacher has to balance and to, uh, work through. So our role is really to provide them opportunities to learn about these six items and give them models for instruction and how to embed them throughout a student's day. These are things that really aren't taught in isolation, but are best learned, um, as you talk through, um, text, um, discussions, conversations, things that happen throughout a student's day. So we're asking teachers for a lot. Um, it's a big job and, uh, we really want to provide them with the learning that they need to support them. Um, our role is to make things easier so that they can focus on the students that are in front of them. Uh, we won't be talking about all six of these tonight. We'll focus on, um, culturally responsive teaching and social emotional learning.
Thank you. Um, so as Kathy pointed out, uh, one of the first highlights will be the cultural, culturally responsive teaching. Um, this is something that I think it's really important for us to highlight some of the work that has been done before today. Um, with, um, at the time it was a Vet D U A that was leading the charge with our equity instruction with our teachers focusing on cultural competency and implicit bias. It took several years, but it was really important for us to make sure that we had that foundation of learning with all our staff. Um, and so we called it her roadshow. She made sure she hit every single building for both those topics. Um, with that, she dabbled in some parts of cultural responsive teaching through a cohort, but because some buildings didn't even have all of the cultural competency and implicit bias piece, it wasn't, we weren't prepared to rule that out on a full scale. Um, so at this point in time, we have Jen Rowe who's leading the charge with her Equity Champions. And she is, start, she just style, started with a pilot with our Title One buildings. We have, she has several teacher leaders that she's worked on, um, really honing in and getting feedback and opportunities to, um, refine this coursework with these teacher leaders focusing on culturally responsive teaching. What is it, what it isn't, what are some specific strategies that you can put in your classroom? And really good professional development allows teachers to learn, go back and try, and then come back again and get that feedback. And this course has allowed that opportunity. Um, they even had an opportunity to work, um, within the coursework with each other to practice some of their instructional strategies. Um, at this time, um, it, they've received a lot of great feedback, so they are prepared to now roll that out to other levels. So we'll be offering it during the day as well as in the evening courses for teachers that, um, would like to take it on their own time as well. Uh, the other area that we're going to highlight for you tonight is really focusing on the social and emotional learning competencies. Um, as you heard in the last presentation, our, um, District S E L Committee has been working a lot with their building-based committees as well. Um, to roll out initially from Castle, um, the Collaborative Academic Social Learning, um, Group that we've been, um, consulting with along the way, really is, um, the best direction they had said to us was to focus on the adult social emotional learning competencies. And so we started with that in January twenty nineteen. Um, each building had an opportunity to talk about what are the five competencies? And how does it apply to each individual educator? We really felt that when you're talking about something so personal, it's, and you're expecting people to teach a skill, we really needed people to have an understanding of where they were within that framework themselves, knowing that each of us have different areas that we can improve upon. Someone may be very socially aware, but may not have great time management skills under self-management. And so, um, we use a lot of examples of how are you feeling when you're late to work? Your heart's racing, you, um, start having maybe some negative thoughts and trying to get into work and you're, you're all caught up in, in being late. Well, that happens to our students when they're late to school. And so really making that application for how an adult may feel is how our students are feeling and how to help, one, reflect as an adult, okay, better responsible decision-making. But then with a student, how can you help guide the students through that particular learning as well? So that's work that we continue on as we're starting to focus on the work that we're doing with students in the classroom as we start becoming more familiar with the resources that we adopted. Um, as far as, um, the work in January, we started through our institute days and our school improvement days. And then through that, each building has also had agendas based, um, for building-based learning and then specific roles as well. So, um, certainly our mental health professionals have had a lot more deeper training um, and are helping out, helping us roll this out to their staff as well. And then we also have opportunities for the individualized and personalized learning. Um, I don't know if you recall from presentation a year ago, we talked about various different formats that we provide professional, professional learning, just like we do for our students. Our teachers have indicated through a survey that they still enjoy and prefer face-to-face, um, learning as much as they like blended learning, as much as they like online learning. So it is a split between those three places. And I think it all, um, depends upon maybe the time of year or individually how people's, um, busy lives outside of school impact them. So, um, we have also found through that, that we have a higher level of attendance in our coursework in the summer. So, um, that's something that we're really making sure that we have a lot of these courses available to them. Um, so this slide has a lot on it. Um, I'll try to hit on a couple of different highlights for each of the areas. We really wanted to highlight for you, um, there's a lot that we, um, as Kathy pointed out, a lot that we are asking our teachers to do, but we also have a lot of supports for them available. Um, if we kind of start on the left-hand side where we're looking at the social emotional castle, um, wheel, where it has the five competencies, um, I shared with you about how we started that in January. We're continuing that on. Um, in addition to, um, the SIP days and the school improvement days, our buildings also are providing learning through the P L C work. Um, some, um, departments are working, are writing this as part of their agendas and how it's embedded into their curriculum already. Um, and then also a lot of buildings provide lunch and learns where it's kind of an opportunity for teachers to come in during their time, um, in the middle of the day, so they're not asked to do something outside the school day where they can still have their time off, but ha- engage in some conversation. And that's typically, um, facilitated by a building-based person on their S E L committee. Um, we were lucky this year, uh, led by Dr. Sullivan, we had, um, three graduates that came to speak to us to kick off the year and really it was focused on portrait of graduate, but we have found that it's so hard to talk about, um, portrait of graduate without talking about those five, um, competencies. And, um, what we thought was, um, so wonderful about what the message they had to share with us is, um, although they recognized that we are a great school district and we provide a lot of academic rigor and, um, have high expectations for them to be successful in life, their story was really about how teachers personally helped them and supported them along the way. And they were even, um, able to name those teachers, um, because of the close connections they had with them. So, um, that really led us on this path to continue on the conversation so that we knew that there was student impact based on our own adult behaviors. The, as we move into kind of the right section or in the middle section, starting with, um, C P I, which is Crisis Prevention Institute, um, the middle courses are really for, um, people have an opportunity to go to these during the day or on their, on their own time. We offer most of them, um, during the day, or, um, in the summer as well. Um, C P I is, as I stated, the Crisis Prevention Institute. We have several instructors on, on the Student Services Team that are trained. Um, and they provide this course for our teachers to, and sometimes our teaching assistants and our mental health professionals, um, to learn how to de-escalate students that are in crisis. Um, really talking about how, um, your approach to a situation can escalate or de-escalate and really helping our teachers have those, that skill set. Um, we, I, I would say that this is one of our, um, most popular classes, um, specifically in, in the student services arena, but a lot of our, uh, general education teachers, uh, enjoy taking this as well. It is, um, there's usually a waitlist and it's filled up right away. So it's been a very common, um, class that we've, uh, hosted over several years and continue to do so. Uh, to the right, you can see that there is the, um, it says Kagan. Kagan is a, uh, is a course that you can take. It's a full day. There's multiple different sessions that kind of build on each other. Um, so that it can take, um, probably up to five days of Kagan if you really wanted to, um, become extremely proficient in the area. But really what it is, is, uh, the collaborative, or cooperative learning structures and instructional practices to increase engagement for students. Um, we've offered this multiple times, we'll continue to do so. We just had a session, um, just last week, maybe the week before, um, where an administrator, uh, was able to bring in a teacher and, um, go alongside each other to, to learn some of those instructional, um, practices. Um, what I had shared with some people for the first time, although I think I knew this all along, um, when I was in the Kagan training was really how they emphasized how, um, it is meant to increase student engagement, but with all the work with student voice, it's also allows for those students that are more passive or compliant learners, but may not always feel comfortable to speak in front of others or share their ideas. It doesn't allow them to necessarily hide, but also share because they might be in a collaborative group and the, the teachers have structured things along the way, um, so that those students feel safe and comfortable to, um, to provide, um, their level of learning and offer something to the group. So that was something, I, I think I knew that, but it was something that I picked up after hearing the messages several times. Um, the other piece that, uh, is something that we're continuing to grow and learn, um, we offered a, uh, combined, uh, collaborative or cooperative learning structure class with S E L last year. And we had such great feedback, it was an hour-long class for our new teachers. But our, um, our, they, the feedback from our teachers as well as the people in the class was that it wasn't long enough, um, that they wanted more, which is fantastic news. They, they wanted a longer class. And I even had a teacher who grabbed me shortly after that class was, um, done and she said it was, she's an experienced teacher, she's not new, um, but she's been to lots of other trainings in other districts and she said it was the first time she was able to walk away and just implement something right away, um, in her classroom the next day. Um, which is for a new teacher to say how energized she was, um, after many years of experience, I thought that was pretty powerful. Um, so this year we're, um, honing that class a little bit more. We'll be offering that in the spring. Um, and again, it's, um, that'll be offered to everybody, not just for new teachers. Um, P B I S is in the bottom there, it says Midwest P B I S Network. That stands for Positive Behavior Intervention Systems. And, um, again, this is something that I think most of you are familiar with. We've talked about it over several years. I think it's important to point out that we have, um, an average of thirty-seven staff members that attend quarterly meetings at, um, Northern Illinois University. Um, that is, that they're going to learn not just about, uh, tier-one practices, but they, PBS has, um, modified a lot of the work that they've done over the years and it's been really impressive. Our teachers enjoy going, so they're attending classes on trauma-informed practices and classroom practices. Um, so they've offered a lot and our teachers keep going back. Um, so at this time, just in the past two years, we have teachers, uh, we've had two hundred and twenty-six staff members attend, uh, P B I S. And you can see maybe through tweets and, um, only some of the agendas for school improvement, how much our schools are focusing on some of the structures. Um, in addition, our members of our district support team and student services offer quarterly meetings, um, to support our, that, and that, our staff embedding that into their schools. Um, and then again, in that middle section, we've talked to you about the mental health first aid. We just wanted to highlight for you that that's something that we're continuing to offer. Um, we've started offering it to our administrators several years ago, along with our mental health professionals. We offer it in the summer. Um, and we are in a couple of weeks of our institute day in February. Uh, we have, uh, someone coming and talking with our middle school counselors, um, to roll out that course. That is something, um, that we continue to offer because we know how powerful that is. Um, and the very, uh, the other right column where it says P D on demand, podcasts and perspectives, these are all more for our personalized learning for our staff. Um, we offer several social emotional learning competency, um, also tied to some of our volume reading activities. Um, Real Walther and, uh, Jessica Walsh have done a nice job connecting these, uh, on-demand videos with books that tie in to, um, character development and how those social emotional skills can, um, impact classroom, um, conversations with students. And then we, uh, currently have a podcast for elementary and middle school for social emotional learning and, uh, a future high school podcast will be developed as well. And then last year, we were fortunate enough, um, through H R, and I think, um, Duncan Kerr has talked about this at some point in time, but we've, um, have online learning through Perspectives, um, which is really connected to our, um, Employee Assistance Program. And they offer webinars, um, on many, many things, but when it's relating to, uh, mental health and wellbeing, they offer things just for financial resources, um, family health, um, personal growth. They even have some legal, um, webinars on there as well. So is, there's a lot of things that, um, we currently have in place to offer to our teachers. Um, for, um, at this point, we, uh, would really want to highlight for you about, um, how we've approached some of the wellbeing components for teachers in relation to safety. Um, if you can kind of think back to your, maybe your undergraduate, um, days or even your high school courses and Psychology one oh one, um, this triangle might be familiar to you, is like Mezzo's hierarchy of needs. And really, the representation at the bottom is basic needs need to be met, food, water, air, sleep. Um, and after that, safety. And unfortunately, in our school environments across the nation, um, we are at a point in time where we know that this is something that we've had to discuss and it's something that no one ever thought we would have to. Um, and no one really wants to because it's so hard. Um, and I've been fortunate enough to work alongside, uh, Mike Anders, who'll share a little bit with you in a minute. Um, because not only does he have that legal lens, but, um, he really has the heart of understanding, um, the educators aren't police officers, they're not expected to be police officers. Um, and really understands that it's a sensitive topic. Um, and we don't know every teacher's background. Um, so when we're talking about specific, um, things that might be, um, challenging for them, we need to approach it with care. So with that, I'm turning it over to my friend Mike.
Well, that's an introduction, thank you Candy. So, um, as I started the position, um, a little over, almost two years ago, um, the primary focus, going back to what Candy was mentioning, um, is meeting the community's expectations, the students' expectations, staff and yours, the board's expectations to provide safe schools. Safe schools so that they can carry out the mission in order to learn and become productive citizens. So, as, um, I turned my focus on preparing the staff in the areas of emergency preparedness. The areas that needed to be covered were prevention, mitigation, preparedness for an emergency, being able to respond to an emergency, and it's all emergencies, and then to be able to recover. So it was a holistic approach that I tried to take and in my opinion, my efforts and the efforts of professional development, working with Candy's been making a, a well-prepared professional staff that's able to be confident in times of crisis so that they can respond. They need to have the professional capacity and skill to help themselves and others. And they can clearly communicate under difficult circumstances. That's been the challenge that I've put forth on the staff. The Emergency Preparedness Foundation then had to be built and that was built starting June sixth, twenty eighteen. That was important to me to start building trust with the administration and building trust with the staff as to who I am and how I felt it was best to roll out the safety measures that we needed across the district. So working very closely with Candy, we were able to roll out Alice Training to District Administrators at that time. And that Alice Training allowed us then to really build that professional capacities I talked about through scenario-based training. The training was focused on saving lives during an intruder event and reinforcing being prepared versus being scared. So the Alice Training then built confidence, I saw, in so many different professionals that literally were coming up to Candy and I after the sessions were completed and thanking us and all, a, a sense of relief that it was provided in a manner that they now got it and they can move forward. It was, uh, one of those things that was underneath their belt. After that Alice Training was completed, it opened communication for, between the staff and me. It really allowed me to then identify more gaps that needed to be closed with the district. And with the support of the district, we were able to, um, increase situational awareness um, and open up new opportunities for the staff. And so we've gone after topics such as stop the bleed now. We've discussed scenario-based de-escalation training that we took place at the College of DuPage. Tabletop exercises were conducted at every single school last year and multiple principals have had me come back to the school, if not twice, three or four times, to provide tabletop exercise activities in order to increase their level of confidence, communication. We're involved in incident command training as we build towards our reunification planning. And we provide greeter training in secretaries recently to help them have some. and we provide greeter training to secretaries recently to help them have some de-escalation techniques should somebody show up at the door that they had to focus on. So the opportunities have been affirmed, which is so important to me besides the staff and the board here, but they've been affirmed by public safety. Our police, fire, EMS partners are not only saying good job, but they're participating, and they're participating in training that we're rolling out. It's been supported by community partners such as Edward Hospital. They've provided us not only support with equipment, but also with their expertise to train our staff, as well as the College of DuPage. And another kind of notch in our IPSD two-oh-four's belt, I think, is regional districts are asking for our template. How are we doing it? And we've been providing them the help so that they can roll it out in a more global fashion. So as I conclude my part of the presentation, I want to emphasize that the work that has been done here is done to reaffirm that we live and we work in a safe school district. This is a safe school district that is always looking to improve. And so I'm always seeking out more opportunities to challenge the staff. I want to thank the board, and thank district staff who's supported me since day one when I arrived. Public safety, my brothers and sisters in law enforcement especially have been there, and the community for all of your support. Go back to Candy.
Thanks, Mike. So after laying that groundwork of safety and really providing our teachers that level of confidence that given in a certain situation, they know how to respond, we also have really been focusing on the wellbeing of our staff. As you can see, on the left-hand side, there's a book called Wellbeing by Tom Rath and Jim Harder, and it focuses on five different areas of wellbeing, career, social, financial, physical, and community. And career wellbeing is highlighted, not that all those other ones aren't important, but what the, in the book it talks about is that if you are enjoying what you do every day, going to work every day, the chances that those other areas of wellbeing are also, also well-balanced and you're doing well in those areas. Whereas if you don't like what you're doing every day, it is probably impacting your life in other areas. In the book, it actually says people with higher career wellbeing wake up every morning with something to look forward to do that day. And that's what we want for everyone that works in two-oh-four, that they wake up every day and they are excited to go learn and grow with their colleagues and help others learn and grow with the students in their classroom. It matters because our forty-six percent of the teachers nationally have reported daily, high daily stress during the school year, according to a Gallup poll, which is tied with nurses nationally as the highest rate among occupational groups. And in addition, according to an Education Week survey in twenty-eighteen, forty-four percent of new teachers leave the profession within five years. Which, that alone tells us there's work to be done so we can help support not just our teachers that are here, but also that our new teachers that walk through the door. We want to decrease burnout and turnover, and we also recognize that a highly engaged teacher will help students become highly engaged, which then impacts student achievement.
Do you mind repeating, what was the percentage that are stressed of teachers?
Forty-six.
Forty-six?
That's according to a twenty-fourteen Gallup poll, national. So on to the fun part, we've been lucky to roll out a wellness campaign, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to follow some of the work that's been done. We've, Dr. Sullivan kicked off the campaign at the beginning of January with some of the support of our district office administrators. Like many of our projects, it's become a interdepartmental, interdepartmental work where we've had our SEL teams from district as well as building our communications department, human resources, the teaching and learning, tech services, support services, and student services. I think I got everybody, it is everybody. Everyone had a hand in making this a fun, successful event for our, our teachers. Our hope is that although we are highlighting wellness, teacher wellness specifically for the month of January, that it is really our way of modeling for others, that it is something that we want people to prioritize. Sometimes it feels like just having the permission to do so, and so this is something that we hope just carries on and something that can promote over the, over the next few years, and it just is integrated within ourselves. If you kind of look at that particular slide on the left, we actually gamified the wellness through an application called Goose Chase, where we were able to download some missions, and our teachers were able to access a register for it and complete these missions. Something as easy as drink some water, to go play a game, practice five, tell five things that you're grateful for. And it's been really fun to see, at this point in time, we have close to five hundred, maybe more at this point, people keep adding, participating in this game, so you can take a picture and they can put some text in some of the things that they're doing. So we are really pleased to, to see how well people were excited to participate. An example with the dog at the top was one of the missions that someone completed. As you can see, a tweet from Dr. Sullivan in the top right corner, reminding people to drink out of the portrait of a graduate water bottle, and then some other tweets from administrators and teachers. We were able to get in buildings the day that we released the Goose Chase game to provide wellness baskets that had books, the Wellbeing Book, along with some other children-based books, and so some of these tweets are even teachers that day that went and took those books and did yoga in their classroom and things like that. So we are really pleased to see how well people related and knew that this was an important piece to the puzzle. I think it speaks to the culture and climate of what we're trying to promote within two-oh-four as well within buildings. In addition, we have a yoga and boxing class, a free class coming up on Wednesday, and I've checked the roster, we have a waitlist, which is really exciting. We're offering four different sessions, we have waitlists, I think we only have three spots in the boxing class, so if anyone's interested, feel free to join us. And it's, so this is something that, if you want to turn to the next one, thank you. Couldn't be done without our community support as well. We have lots of connections and support through our perks program. We highlighted those that are specific to wellness. Several of these groups have donated family memberships for three months through the YMCA. We have Rush Copley donated a massage that we just got, Organic Life for the winner of our Goose Chase game. The amount of participations that building will have, a healthy snack is kind of their reward. I feel like they're doing it more for bragging rights than they are the snack.
There's a lot of competition.
There's a lot of competition. It's been really fun to see, there's, it's like a little buzz in the buildings. And then we've recently partnered with Athletic Spa, who's running our classes for yoga and boxing, but they've also, they're donating for the most participation from the buildings, Athletic Spa will then donate a class to that building so they can have a yoga or boxing class onsite, as well as an individual from the class will be selected to have a personal consultation training, and they're giving us a discount on their meal plan. So lots of different things that are available to our teachers that are participating in our plan. We're just really lucky in that we have such a caring, supportive community to partner with us in this project. As far as some of our next steps, we are going to continue looking at developing some of our demonstration classrooms. As you know, we've had Dr. Walther's classroom opened up, and we've had many of our staff members attend her Knowing and Guided Readers class that are now, have been able to go in and visit and observe the work that she does in her classroom. We're going to continue on with the Mental Health First Aid. Knowing that we continue to work, we've modified our new teacher induction program quite a bit, and we're going to continue to look at ways that we can support our teachers, knowing that they have all those plates in the air. What is it that we expect our new teachers to be able to do when they hit the ground running, and how can we support them in that process? I think the, the percentage of forty-four new teachers leaving the profession in five years is startling to us, so we want to do everything we can to combat that number. We also have continued to work with our new staff onboarding as well, as it relates to our teaching assistants and our clerical and classified staff. We'll be working with Tyrone, continue to work with Tyrone Howard moving forward. And then, as you can see, the list of everything we spoke about tonight, we're going to continue to offer through summer and so on. And at this time, we just, we're very thankful for all the support from the buildings as it relates to all the work that they're doing. We have a lot of wonderful teacher leaders and our administrators have been wonderful. A lot of this they take on in the, the professional learning is happening all day, every day, and we couldn't do it without everyone's support in that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
I had a question about the safety. I was wondering, how was COD a partner? I wasn't understanding that part.
So COD has provided their facilities to us, it's allowed us to take staff to their facilities and go through some rather intense, is the way it's been described, back to me, training. It's focused on de-escalation. So the partnership that we've been doing there basically is COD's offering their personnel to help us with the training. It's not just my training, it's working with COD in partnership too, so they have two trainers onsite there to help out.
That's part of the Homeland Security, right?
That's part of the Homeland Security.
Institute that they have.
Okay. They also, do you want to talk about the greeter training?
And they provided the greeter training as well to us. COD has a program set up where I was able to reach out to them, they provided a trainer to teach all of our greeters and our secretaries at the elementary school level. Just some strategies on how to deal with a difficult person or suspicious behavior outside of the school.
Mike, how often do we have to do re-training, or, you know, if they get it once, or we're pretty good?
Pretty Alice scenarios?
Yes.
I like to do it every week. I think if we do the.
Not a lot.
Right.
It might increase that stress.
We're getting it, we've got it. So, no, the, the training I'm looking at right now is trying to do it based upon a model I'm working out with Candy right now, is maybe every other year that we could take a look at doing scenario-based training. So I'm going to start something new this year where new teachers are going to go through more of just a one, two, I think I'm going to have maybe ten, twenty people max in a class and run them through scenarios so I don't have to basically rely on all the district resources in order to accomplish that. And then after that, I'd like to see if we can get it accomplished every other year or maybe every third year. Once you get the scenarios, once you get the concepts, you kind of have it. A lot of people, when they walked into it, they had no idea what they would do, and now they have a sense of what they could do. The tabletop exercises are ongoing, and those always provide an opportunity to talk out situations and scenarios and figure out the best way to handle them.
When you do that over the summer, I would love to make sure that we kind of know, I think I'd indicated to you before, I'd love to have a chance to go through, through that, I think it'd be beneficial for us as well.
Happy to have you.
Mr. Eisen? So first of all, I thank all of you guys for all the work you do with professional learning and some big undertakings the last couple of years with safety, Mike, thank you so much. And doing it in, in an appropriate way, safety training, because you've seen examples where it's not done in an appropriate way across the country. And for those that don't know, I mean, administration provided us a ten-page list of all the professional development trainings we have for our staff, so that's just amazing and incredible. I was very excited to hear about CPI and the de-escalation training, and especially when it comes to our special needs kids and, and discipline issues, quite frankly, that everybody can benefit from those de-escalation techniques, and it's great to hear that it's so popular. My questions are, are in the culturally responsive areas, are we going to be trying to make an effort of doing more of that district-wide? I don't know if there's anything you can share with us on that, and then I have a follow-up too, but go ahead.
Sure. In March, we are opening up some training during the day for student, or for some teachers to be released from the building in somewhat of a cohort fashion, so I believe it's, there'll be four times for half a day over the course of March and April. And then for those exact same days, there's an evening course that teachers can go to as well, and we'll continue that. It's, it's kind of like the path and cycle that we'll follow over and over and over again until we get as many people through. That's our ultimate goal.
And part of the idea behind it is, so the twenty that just went through it, we've asked them to go back and talk to their teams, share their ideas, because it's little tweaks here and there that help support our students and help them to feel welcome and, and that we see them within the classroom. So that's part of the training, is sharing with them how they can go back and share the resources and that the things, the things that they've learned within their buildings. So our hope is that they tell two friends, and then they tell two friends, and then we continue to have the cycle for the, for the learning for everyone. But it is something that we want to expand all the way across. We were excited to be able to get the feedback and get a template for it, so now that can be used throughout elementary, but now revised for middle school as well as high school.
And then equally as important, are we going to be doing more stuff? Because I've personally taken the two-day course, Mental Health First Aid, and man, that was impactful. It just, things I still carry with me that are just so, and I can only imagine for teachers, you know. So are we planning to offer more of those as well? Because quite frankly, I'd like to make the culturally responsive and the mental health first aid like requirements for all our staff.
It's a matter of scale. So the Mental Health First Aid is, we partnership with typically Edward Hospital to provide the training. It's an eight-hour training in order to have that, so that's something that we're going to look at how to scale that and how to make that available so that we, everybody can have it, and then dig deeper if they like. The same is true, you know, we're working with Tara Fowler and Jen Roar, working with our middle school ELA and social studies teachers to, on some training for culturally responsive teaching. You know, as we've rolled out more diverse text, let's talk about how do you present it, how do you use it, what are the conversations, how do you facilitate those with students? So we're coming at it from a lot of different points, but you're right, that mental health first responder, the first aid training is something that we need to work on scale, and I think our regional office is looking at that as well.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Grover?
Talking about mental health training, I know Alice Training is compulsory, and we do have a list of courses offered to the teachers. Which, besides Alice, what are some, what are the courses that are requirements, or what is the training that is required of all teachers?
So there's a list through the Global Compliance Network that includes coursework on bullying, on rotation of attention deficit disorder, of sexual harassment, of technology.
Bloodborne pathogens.
Yes.
My allergies, food allergies.
So there's, I can get you the, the list, Doug probably has it memorized, but we can get the list to you. But everyone is required to go through those, and it's part of the agreement with the association to work through them.
Besides, teachers have to, they're required to take sixty hours of training every five years, correct? For their license to keep their license?
It's a hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty, so teachers are constantly getting trained, and so I appreciate the hard work that they do. My other question is, if I am not a special ed teacher, can I still take the special ed training?
The CPI?
So you can take training, it doesn't matter, you can choose whatever courses.
Right. There are some roles that it's required, but most of our professional learning is open to everyone.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I did have a question just about, on the culturally responsive, just on safety first. If you can share a little bit, when you mentioned on what's happening, you mentioned continuing work with Tyrone Howard with, to help all students thrive, a little bit about that, and then another question I had, just on the, we've been talking so much about staffing and looking at, I'm not sure if this is here, whether it's more of a Doug question, but on some of the culturally responsive and implicit bias things, are we seeing, having a chance to share some of those things with our building administrators as well, so that as we're looking at staffing and those types of things, that, that comes into play certainly as well?
The cultural competencies and implicit bias training, Dr. Dubiel did that with everyone, including bus drivers, lunchroom supervisors, so everyone had that baseline training, and then as we work through, we've talked with building principals about culturally responsive teaching. Now that we have the course, our curriculum and instruction team is kind of, is working through that a little bit, and then we'll continue to help everyone. is kind of, is working through that a little bit. And then we'll continue to help everyone understand what it is. We've offered some books for buildings and some buildings have taken us and do, are doing book studies in that area as well. We partnered, when we had Dr. Howard in October, we provided opportunities for buildings to bring some staff in with their administrators. And we got a great response of, we need more. And so what we're trying to do is partner with him. He is co-author with a group of professors who've worked on a book called All Students Must Thrive. And within each chapter of that, it highlights a different area, for instance, homeless students, and some research and some activities in order to promote and to help students who are homeless to thrive. So through our district equity leadership team, we've talked about having him come back and we could do a district book study and have him kick it off and talk to us about it, and then come at the end and help us sum it up. They are, he just sent a copy of the workbook. So to promote discussion throughout the book study that we'll be taking a look at. But we're in conversations with him about how best to do it and how best to have those conversations and to work through that.
Thank you.
I guess I want to elaborate on what Ms. Grover said and also what Candy said in terms of mental health of our teachers. And I want to make, first of all, I really appreciate our work on safety because I think that's really important and wellness also. On slide three, I appreciate that there are six areas which we have identified as focus. Sometimes teachers might look at this, and being an ex-teacher, I might look at it and say, those are our plates. And sometimes you hear teachers say, the plate is getting way too full. So how do you determine those six areas of focus? And how do we make sure that we don't have like nine, 10? What's the right number? You know what I'm saying? How, what's the process of looking at this over time in order to make sure that we're focused? Because we could have twenty plates.
Right.
And get nothing done. My experience is, if you have four or five and really focus on them over the course of several years, that you have more concentrated and focused staff development with the likelihood of teachers following through year after year. So I'm kind of interested in how you determine what those six areas of, you know, focus would have been.
Well, the first thing I want to do is say that we're not expecting these to be a part of what a teacher does every day today. These are all works in progress and are all at different stages of development. But as we work in the next two to three years, these are areas of focus. And, you know, this, some of it's determined through research, some of it's determined through our own assessments, some of it's determined through needs and through discussions that we've had with teachers. The good thing about these is that they're really all focused on relationships with kids when you look at them. When you dig into, we've been talking a lot about volume reading and helping students find the right book, encouraging them. So when you know a student, you can help them find books that they enjoy and are engaged in reading. When you know a student, you can help them, social emotional learning is help, providing them with structure so that they can know themselves and make decisions. Cultural responsive teaching is being aware of who they are so that we can support them. Career exploration is helping them develop their interests and their strengths. So you have to know them or help them to know them, which is what most of these are. How do we help our students know themselves? Computational thinking is how to help them think about what they know and look at it differently. And then digital citizenship is really SEL digitally. So how do you be nice? And how do you invite somebody to do something? How do you, we call it safe, savvy, and social digitally. So they're all, all connected, but you can see why it's important that we spend the time on helping our teachers be aware of what they are and to build that understanding first before we ask them to do things with students. Because they can see how things are connected and use that self-awareness piece if there's something digitally that they're working through and help the student make that connection about what they know about themselves and then what they want to put out there for somebody else to see. So there are a lot of plates. They're all interconnected. We're not expecting them to be proficient in any of them right now. These are all a work in progress. But the reason for this graphic is to help us see that they're all interconnected and they're all going to the same thing, is to support student growth by supporting our teachers and supporting our student growth. So these will be things that we'll talk about, that we'll work through. We'll have some visuals, which are always helpful. And, you know, when you think about those and you think about our portrait of a graduate, they all tie into that as well. So we're trying to help teachers see that it all fits together, that digital citizenship isn't something that you do separately in a separate entity. So for a half an hour, I teach digital citizenship and then I go on to volume reading. It's more about how, as it occurs within your daily instruction, how are you helping the students to understand what it is and teaching them good practices?
Great. Thank you.
Is that helpful?
Yes. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Move to the legislative advocacy update. Dr. Sullivan and I attended the most recent Lend meeting on January 24th. Richard Ingram, the executive director of TRS was there, gave us an informative and somewhat humorous report.
In an odd way.
In an odd way on the state of TRS. And he provided an historical perspective. I don't know how you left the presentation. I left it feeling that TRS is still in a pretty delicate state and will be so for a pretty long time. Although there was not talk from him about the legislature going to a pension cost shift, I still walked away a bit wary that as our legislature goes back into session, which is February 28th, and bills I think need to be entered by February 14th, something that we should continue to monitor. The legislative network gave its own take on the property tax force report. A few of the things that I thought might be legislative initiatives may not impact us as much as other school districts. And that was to mandate that schools with significant reserves abate their reserves.
We wish they don't have that.
So I don't think we have to worry about that. And since we're a unit district, consolidation, I think, might be a big legislative initiative coming up, yes. The talk is pretty heavy there. And aside for us is that they, the property tax force is talking about TIFs and how they affect districts. The report said that you should set aside 25% of all new created TIFs for school districts. So we'll see how that goes. Lend Lobby Day is April 29th, 2020. It's an opportunity for school board members to go down to Springfield. I was able to go last year. I found it very, very informative. And actually, it was at a time when we had a legislative push, I think it was on physical education. And I thought we had an impact just by our presence. I encourage you to circle that date. And if you can go, I would go. Finally, we learned that e-learning for Election Day is maybe going to be proposed, but it's experiencing some pushback. And we may want to make sure that we continue to inform our community that we think that's a good thing. I don't know if you have any feedback on that or not.
I mean, there's a bill that's been already written. So people are responding. I think they've talked about some pushback on the bill.
Karen, any, have you talked with any of your counterparts downstate or any feel on the consolidation issue? Do you think that's a?
You know, I, I don't know. I mean, the other thing that we also heard at Lend is that the major push legislatively is really going to be on the fair tax and that there really isn't a belief that a lot will get, will happen other than that. But the consolidation talk has just not gone away. And both parties are having some of that talk. You know, there's not a lot of support in DuPage. We're the anomaly, us Naperville 203, Wheaton and Elmhurst are the four out of 40-some school districts in DuPage that are unit districts. So, you know, you're not, there's not a lot of support for consolidation in that room with those districts. But it, the conversation hasn't gone away, like I think people expected that it would. I'll be at the, the Large Unit District Association is next week and down in Springfield. So I think it'll be interesting to hear their take.
Moving to board update, I, I sent you a memo from IASB about a meeting on February 21st. The Illinois Association of School Boards will be meeting with larger districts to talk about their needs. I'm excited about that. And hopefully, we'll see some results that they will continue to serve us well. So I'm looking forward to that meeting. And I think everyone who provided input in regards to the superintendent search and how we could have done better or what we did well, I think it will help inform us. But more importantly, and the real purpose of providing that feedback is to, hopefully, a long, long time down the road, when a, when a future board has to go through a superintendent search, just to have in the archives, archives, a reflection on what we did in order that they can also have a successful superintendent search. So I'm hoping to get that to you. You might want to look at that and say, oh geez, I have three other thoughts as I look at the list. And then we can make sure that they're in a safe place for future boards. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Yep.